Okay, call the meeting to order, first meeting of two thousand and twenty-three. First item is election of votes.
Make a motion we retain John Pratt as president elect, Roy Wright as vice president.
Second.
Now you see how things work, Tom. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, now, alright, so I'll run down through these, we're gonna have, there's a few changes that have been requested. Plan commission, JB, you're still willing to do that? Redevelopment, you're still on board? Cameron, you've said you want out of solid waste, is that right?
Please.
Please. Uh, are you willing to take Thrive instead of?
Yes, sure I am.
You are? Well, I don't know, that's in the, panning out of the, okay, that's fine. Uh, Tom, would you be willing to take solid waste?
Oh, that's fine.
It's four meetings, I think it's just four, is it four meetings a year?
Uh, I believe so, they're typically on Wednesday at nine AM. Uh, I think there's one that's at eleven for lunch and that they're, I've got the schedule.
Well, if you could forward that to Tom, if he wouldn't mind, so we'll put Tom down for solid waste. And, um, we'll put Cameron in at Thrive. There is no Rockville Economic Commission as far as I know, so we're just gonna leave that blank. If we hear different, we'll address it. Uh, George Nicholas does not wish to be appointed on the Alcoholic Beverage Commission. Uh, we come up with John Martin and indicated he'd be willing to do it. It's kind of a, quite honestly, a do-nothing board, but we have to have somebody. Uh, Pam, are you still willing to stay on the parking rack board?
I guess so.
I think Craig Craft is fine on zoning appeals. Katie, it's in your packet, I think recommended, Kim Shorter and Derek Davis, they've done it before. Uh, the library board, Sheila Roors', uh, time is up, so we'd like to reappoint her. Uh, clear down, Cameron, do you want to take that nine-one-one? You might as well do both of those, I mean, it kind of makes sense, I don't know why we had them separated, but if you're gonna do one, you might as well do the other one. Okay, that makes sense to me. And then council attorneys, Bob Clutter, we'd like to retain him, so. I need to go with that again, or we good? So we'll need a motion to make those appointments.
Make those appointments.
All fair?
Aye.
Now, don't forget before we leave.
No, I gotta sign that.
Sign that, she wants, so.
Okay, we have your meetings.
We'll send that home with Tom and she can get it.
She can, okay. Uh, you have your meeting schedule in your packet, um, it's still the second Thursday, nine AM here. The budget hearings are tentative at this time in this building. Most likely that'll hold, but we do want the flexibility to change it if we need to. Otherwise, while it's the same, we'll need to adopt the meeting schedule.
So, move.
So, motion been made, say to adopt the meeting schedule, all fair? Okay, for some time, there's been requests about us looking at the mileage. Be quite honestly, we probably should have done it sooner, but we're gonna, the plan is from now on, we'll try to review it at least at this meeting every year. And it can always be reviewed at any time, but, uh, gonna try to get that on the schedule where we just review it in January every year. So, right now, the auditor advice is worth forty cents. You have what we have, what we got from, Roy got this from the state.
Yeah, I know this from the state. The, uh, they tiered based upon the price of gas and, uh, so in June of twenty-two, which is the last, or at least I can seem to find for them, they pulled out the statewide average price of fuel at five-twenty-one, which would have set the state mileage rate at forty-nine cents. Um, if you were to use the price of gasoline, I believe in town is still under three-thirty type number, um, three-twenty-nine-nine. That would set it according to this table at forty-one cents. Now, I'm not advocating one way or the other for that, but that's how you work this table that they've put out there. I don't know, correct, wrong, or indifferent, but that's what, that's how they did it, so, um. It's been forty cents for a long time, it was, you know, back when, back when Pam was the auditor, it's the last time I remember dealing with it and, you know, it's been up and down since that point. Probably times where if you were to use this, that it would have been lower than forty cents and times when it would be higher and summer certainly, it was last year, it would have been higher. So, be careful what that's worth, but.
Well, does anybody have any suggestions? I mean, I'm kind of in that forty-two, forty-four, forty, I don't, I don't care. You know, it's whatever's kind of fair to the, you know, the people that were using their vehicle and they're making trips, I mean, we need that.
Do you want to go forty-four?
I, I don't know what I care, I don't know what I care, Jim, it's what, I mean, what's everybody day.
Motion, Jim?
Yes.
Second.
Alright, sounds like we're voting on that, alright, forty-four cents, all fair? And we want, that is affecting January one of this year, we want to make that clear.
Let's say if it makes a significant jump again.
Yeah, we can always review, it certainly can, and we just kind of fallen down on the job of even getting a review, quite honestly.
I don't think we want to get in the habit of adjusting a lot.
Because it makes it a pain for the auditor's office to have to.
If it jumps up to five dollars again.
Yeah, look at it, man. Okay. Katie, Department head comments.
Um, since the last meeting, we got an IBTR decision on Richard and Thelma Jean Hatkey. They raised her assessment based on the appraisal that I obtained for that. And, um, so we won that one, so thank you for your support and allowing me money to do that, and I appreciate you for doing that for me.
Her taxes actually went up, didn't they?
Yeah.
Her assess value went up though.
Her assess value went up, we'll see what taxes do.
And that was the, the state did that, or?
Yes, the state did that. Indiana Board of Tax Review.
They felt that her assessment was too low?
Yes, they did.
Okay. Julie?
I sent my year-end report, so I'm just gonna kind of end my monthly, I'm just gonna kind of fetch a few of these. So, on the monthly report that I sent, um, medic one is still, all the numbers are there, I guess, does medic one is still not complete? They did contact me yesterday and tell me that they were ready for the intercom system, so that has been sent to them, which means they did get the, um, all the air conditioning components put in allegedly, I haven't seen it with my own eyes, but, so they say it's going to be a couple more weeks and we will get med one back. We'll see. Um, our crews did move into the living quarters, so they're in the bedrooms, dining room, living room, kitchen area. Uh, the campers, my husband and I went through and completely winterized those on yesterday. We actually moved them away from the building, they're in a parking lot now, so we're one step closer to having our building back and being done. Um, we are waiting, I'm still waiting on insurance to let us know what their rate is going to be on the campers, so I guess they offer them back to, back to the county as salvage cost, the county gets to choose what they want to do with them. They got really far behind because of all the pipe ruptures with all the freezing, so, um, I still am waiting on them for some inventory content stuff, but the campers are part of that as well. The meeting, um, next week for the commissioners, I am gonna submit to sell the IU ambulance, so that, we worked on that last year, getting that truck, just so we'd have it for the festival. Hopefully that money will be coming back to us really soon, I don't think it'll take long to get rid of it. Um, we are fully staffed now, so we have five full-time paramedics and seven full-time EMTs. I still have two employees that, uh, are eligible to take their medic test, which potentially is gonna put us at seven medics for the first time in almost two years. Three years, I guess, to have seven. Um, I do still have one employee that's off on FMLA, we are using part-time to fill that position. Eventually that may come to be a budgetary issue with the new pay, but I really think that it's going to all kind of even out. Using a part, multiple part-time people that won't be in overtime to fill that position, I think are, it's really gonna kind of even out. For my end-of-year report, so our responses actually were down just a little bit this year compared to last year, which last year was our biggest year ever. Our total revenue was six hundred and five thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents, the first time we've ever broke six hundred thousand, and we've steadily increased every year for the last five years now, I think. We did send a total of one hundred and forty-nine accounts to collections and a total of seventy-five accounts to litigation. We traveled a total of sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-point-four miles and consumed seven thousand, six hundred and six-point-three gallons of fuel at a cost of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. So, a lot of miles traveled, a lot of fuel consumed. I did bring a couple, if you guys ever want to see them, I can, I can always go through. I have a whole list of fun things that I go through to kind of keep my employees accountable, um, to, to tell us where we're at throughout the year, so I printed off some of our informational things for the entire year. Our busiest day of the week, or the entire year of twenty-twenty-two was Saturday, and our busiest time was noon. No clue why. And it changes every year, but Saturday at twelve o'clock, for some reason, was our big, our busiest time. On average, it takes us about five minutes to get to our call, takes us, uh, eleven minutes at our call, but it takes us twenty-six minutes to transport that person to the hospital. So, our biggest call volume has to be close to Rockville, obviously, it's the biggest kind of town area that we have. But, we're still transporting, I think it's sixty, sixty-one percent of our patients go to Clinton and twenty-two percent go to Union of Pear, but seems like a big number, but then, we're still transporting like six percent of our patients to Hendricks County, six percent are going to regional, eight percent are going to Clay County, so we're still, that's where all of our mileage is coming from, obviously, all of our transports. We're doing a ton of transports right now. And then I can check on all my employees, too, that's why I really like running these reports, so it tells me who's right in the most runs, it tells me who's, um, getting them finished in a timely manner, who's getting the most medications and treatment, so if you guys ever want to know, I can pull that up real quick. But it was a really, overall, for being a tragic year for us, it also was a pretty successful year by the end of the year. Looking back, by the time we got to the end of December, we, we were holding it together and doing good.
The IU ambulance, you said you're gonna maybe get rid of, you don't think we need to keep that for a spare? Or, or do you feel like we have enough, you know, as we have everything up and running, that we don't really need that as a spare?
We have three ambulances right now of our own.
Right.
Um, we have, the fourth one will be medic one when it comes back and remounted, so that'll give us four trucks, we don't need more than that.
You don't think that we need one in case we're down one, you know?
Well, normally, we only staff two anyways, so that gives us two backup trucks, but the IU truck, I, I literally did the bare minimum to get it certified for the festival. So, if we wanted to have it as a backup truck, we would have to.
Have to do more.
We'd have to do more to it, and it's got two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand miles on it. And it's a Chevy diesel, it's, I don't think that it's worth us putting that amount of money into it, honestly.
How old is it?
It's a two thousand and six. We paid a dollar for it and then we paid, I think, six hundred and seventy-five dollars to have the bare minimum striping and things that we had to have on the body, um, to get it in.
It's not worth keeping it for the box to remount or anything?
No.
Yeah, the box is.
We, we had talked about that, that box won't work for us. It is a small Metro box. It's a center mount Metro and it is, it won't work for the equipment that we carry. They used it as a transfer-only truck, like a convalescent transfer where they went from nursing homes to hospitals and back. It won't even hold all of our equipment. It has to be in bags. So, I think the best option for us is just to sell it and put that money back into whatever account we took it out of.
Okay, that just was, you know, just was something that, I thought, well, maybe I'll just keep this as a spare, but if that's, I didn't realize how it was equipped, though, obviously.
We were really hoping that it would have a big enough box that potentially we could, we could use that one in the future, but.
It's just not workable.
There's no way, no.
Okay. Any other questions for Julie? Alright, thank you, we're glad that you're, they're close on the building, then, just down to?
They're working on the, um, the old garage that we run on the east side. They, right now, are putting a sprinkler system in, catch a building on fire one time and it changes the way, so we gotta have sprinkler systems and fire alarms. Uh, but they're getting that in and insulation is going in, and then they're gonna start putting the, um, steel back up, the steel siding. So, it won't take them long on that side at all.
Good deal, good deal. Chris?
Hey, there's, um, just a quick rant, okay? So, there's two grants that we have that we're still working on, and that's to put the generator in at the fairgrounds and, uh, in the highway department, and then the other one is the, um, we're writing our multi-hazard mitigation plan, we got a grant for that, we're working with Partnership Park County. We recently were awarded three grants, one was the annual salary reimbursement, which is nothing that interesting. The other one is, um, we're gonna buy buying, uh, radios and computers for the dispatch, and then another one was we're gonna do, uh, computer upgrades for the police cars here in the county. And you can see the numbers on those there. And the big thing is, I'd like to, your approval so that I can spend into the negative on those accounts. Uh, they should be reimbursed here by the end of the year. Uh, but that's traditionally what we do. Alright.
Those are the ones where we, you spend it and then you submit a claim and then they reimburse it?
It gets reimbursed, yes.
We did do that, I know you weren't in here, but we did, I think it was the highway one, didn't enter fund loan over to that fund to keep it in the black at the year end. Um, so, just make sure we remember that. But, yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright. No, no public here, so no public comments, so we'll move on to the minutes there. In your packet. For December eight, we're just doing both the guests, we've got December eighth and the twenty-ninth.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from December eighth and December twenty-ninth, that's presented.
Motion's been made, say to approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, we have the same, alright. Okay, additional appropriations, the attachment?
Yeah, I don't, I have nothing to add to this, uh, the only reason I knew it happened, because it was in the newspaper.
Glad you're reading, I'm sure this ain't what's glad you're reading.
Yeah, absolutely. Evidently, uh, the prosecutor out of pre-trial diversion wants an appropriation for four thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents in their equipment line.
So we have no information about that?
Nothing more than that. Yeah, I don't expect the, you guys want to have it.
Yeah, well. Well.
It's not like the money's not there, but I mean, I don't know.
I don't know, that's, I mean, I doubt if it's anything, they never ask for anything that's unreasonable.
So it's going into equipment line?
Yeah, it's for equipment, and we, uh.
Obviously, or something, because it's, you know, it's such a specific number.
We appropriated some money into that line and budget. We always do, at least. Ten thousand dollars is in appropriation already, so.
It's whatever your pleasure is, I mean, we can make them wait and ask, or you can just go ahead, I mean, that's, that's a fund that he basically controls anyway.
Yeah.
I, I just say, go ahead and get it out of, you can still ask for more color if you want more information, we can do that without any problem.
We would like to get to the point to where we have departments asking for additionals, that they actually show up and explain what they want, or send something, or what they want.
Most of them either send something or they show up.
So. I'll motion to approve it, um, because I, I mean, like you said, he can technically spend about anything he wants out of that thing anyway, so.
One second.
Okay, motion been made, second, to approve the additional appropriation, all fair? Maybe you could, Mary Ann, if you could maybe send words over there, just ask them if they could send us an email or provide some little bit of background on what's for. Can tell me approved it, but we'd like to kind of know what worked for me. Please. Alrighty, we're gonna have it. Pay the jury.
I'm gonna make a motion to pay the jury, second.
Motion's been made, say to pay the jury, all in favor? Okay, we're skipping that one, so we're down to, uh.
Reports. Uh, redevelopment, we'll have this organization meeting, uh, later this month. Second. So, whatever date, the second Tuesday, or the fourth Tuesday is, it's like twenty-four, there you go.
Uh, courthouse security did not meet, plan commission?
Didn't meet, but I did talk to Cassidy, she said for some reason, building permits are way up, you know? Where the foot and all that stuff, they're, they're coming in in droves, it's over a million dollars, I think, in December.
Wow. Solid waste, have anything?
Hasn't met yet.
Okay, yeah, you're, you're, you washed your hands of that. Alright, we'll move on to new business.
The agenda is incorrect, that's not resolution twenty-two, it's twenty-two-three. Oh, one is a good number, I assume? Okay. This is a, uh, reduction of appropriations of cross-department transfer for, uh, the court. The court always had these criminal rule five transcripts funded out of the public defender department of the general fund. And with the change in public defender being the regional public defender system, and when we adopted our budget, we moved everything into service contracts line, and that money all gets paid to Burmaine County as the host county. This ended up kind of just in with it. This money that they pulled out of public defender to pay for these transcripts. And I, don't ask me what a criminal rule five transcript is, but I can explain it. The judge did a trans, or has asked for a transfer, an intercategory transfer, to move some service contract money into this line. We did all this stuff, um, in the, for the end of twenty-two, uh, prior to now, but this will fix it for twenty-three, so that when we then adopt the twenty-four budget, this line will exist and we will appropriate it appropriately for them. Um, so I created this resolution to make the transfer, uh, from group insurance to criminal rule five transcripts this person.
Okay. Questions? Okay, hearing none?
I don't know where that transcript money's going, I'm not gonna make a motion.
Okay, that's fine with me. Okay. You can either do it or not do it, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter to me.
I mean, well, tell me a little bit more about it, I guess I would have told you.
They're taking money out of the, it was appropriated for insurance, right?
I, that's my choice.
Well, that's hard to decide out there.
There's extra in that group insurance.
Criminal rules, the five, I think, they type all transcripts and get paid by the page form, and it's, it's an extra income for the court staff, I'll tell you what it is. Right, Tom? We've, we've seen those before, that one.
I don't know the answer to that, I mean, I mean, I'm trying to find.
Somebody has to do it, though. I mean, that.
Supposed to, yeah. Yeah, I'm not gonna stop, but I just want to make the motion.
Was there, he sent out some kind of, yeah, let us look and find the email here in just a second, I mean, the judge had said, it's been a while back since we've talked about this and.
Okay, so, Indiana criminal rule five requires that transcripts of felony plea hearings and sentencing be transcribed, similar to the requirement that all hearings be recorded with approved equipment. Up through twenty-ten or so, the criminal rule five transcripts were paid for from the court budget. At some point, it got switched to the public defender budget. In any event, starting October one, which I already kind of talked about, we will no longer have a local public defender budget. That money ended up moving over and going to the regional, so the preparation of criminal rule five transcripts will need to go back to the court budget.
So it's something we've been doing all along, it's just that it was being paid for out of?
Being paid for out of a different fund.
Out of a different fund, it's not something new.
Tom's right, you have to do it.
Yeah, we don't have, I, look, we don't really have any choice in it, I mean.
I'll make the motion then.
I don't know who's getting that money, I can't answer that. I do know that you're gonna have to transcribe these things, so.
Alright, so we're having a motion, second. All fair?
Aye.
Close. Okay, copy.
That's fine, no problem.
Okay. Anything else, uh, Mary Ann, hearing none, or?
No.
You want to just talk about what you've been doing in the new, new office?
Just trying to find things and answer questions. And, um, like I said, we made payroll for the first time, our girls did, so.
It'll be a work in progress, so, you know, it's, everybody understands, so.
That office is full of staff for the first time, but the real estate, Shannon gave her notice the twentieth, it's her last day. But April, the part, the girl that's working part-time until May, when her kids are out of school, is going to Shannon's job and I'm, gotta hire a new TML and excise person.
Well, give you a little breathing room, then, to kind of, you know.
So April's already learning Shannon's job, so she'd be trained before Shannon leaves.
Good.
And who's doing the HR stuff? That's Susan, is that her name?
Susan Kramer, the payroll person. She's certified in HR.
Oh, six-one, something about it, it's refreshing, twelve days in, to have the level of cooperation that that office has seen in a long time. I've been interacting with you a lot, and I'm thrilled with the, I mean, I know it's been, I know it's painful and difficult for all of you, but it's already a breath of fresh air.
And we're having people come in and saying there's been problems, and they want to know what our office can fix it, because they let the other auditor know and nothing was ever done.
Oh, yeah, you're gonna have that in a while.
You're gonna have a lot of those.
Yeah.
And, just do them as you can, you know, and I wouldn't let them, just try to do your best and.
Didn't get here overnight, so don't get fixed that much, it's already better than it was.
I have a couple more things if we're done with that.
Okay.
Um, incumbents' reminder, uh, they're due on the fifteenth. Sent email reminder out yesterday. We will attempt to do them in February, if not, we will do them in March. The, uh, county attorney has continued on the process of filing the claim on a former auditor's bond for the overpayments of various individuals. And there's paperwork that has been delivered to, uh, the commissioners and to us, and I believe the commissioners gave it to the, to the auditor, uh, to work on, and, um, so we'll, we'll keep working through that process of getting that done.
Yeah, I would pass those around if you would, well, I will do that, too. So don't run off, we still have to sign for the minutes. Anything else?
We might have some, um, in the auditor's office, there might be some, uh, service charges and late fees that are happening, because, um, I, I can't find everything, and so.
We understand.
But I have to ask forgiveness from you guys, so.
Well, we understand, so it's.
Do what you gotta do.
Do what.
Well, and she's training all of us, too.
I'm sure that it'll all work out, so you just let, you just let us know what you need from us, and I'm sure that it'll, it'll happen. How many people?
Sean, how many people still owe this on the over face?
Uh, Roy, I'm sure can tell you.
Yeah, it's a big deal, don't worry about it.
It's not, it's not that many, but it's still, it's. Yeah, I think that was just, it's just the whole package today.
He wasn't on, so, that's all right.
Yeah, he wasn't on, so he doesn't sign. Just pass it through, just pass it through. So our next meeting will be February. So our next meeting will be February ninth. We'll look that up and see.
Uh. Thirty-eight, Jim.
Thirty-eight people?
Thirty-eight people, plus one for the maintenance employee, which was a different scenario.
Okay, thank you.
That's three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents in that year.
Drew that number again.
Three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents. Know what I said?
Okay, anything else? Okay, you give that to Sheila, please. I signed it, so she can take it from there. That's handy. Alright.
Did, did we get a copy of, the signed copy of that?
No, but we.
No, but we can make one here.
I'll give you one. Yeah, I'll give it back and we'll make a copy.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you all.